Okay. It's nine o'clock, I call our meeting to order. Amanda, would you call roll, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Bone? Terrell Williger?
Here.
Geisler?
Here.
Dorian?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Chairman Glazer?
Here.
Commissioner Terrell Williger, would you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Merciful God, thank you that we can depend on your presence with us in every season and situation. We are grateful that each season is orchestrated by you. Help us to see your hand and guidance in our lives as we go through changes. May we grow and trust and persevere in the valleys. For when we have challenges, your light continues to shine on us in mercy and grace. And all God's people said, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
For the September 7th meeting? Yes? Can I have a motion to-
Motion to approve the minutes.
Support. Motion to approve. Any questions? There are none. Roll call?
Certainly.
Do we need roll call?
The Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Terrell Williger?
Here.
Geisler?
Here.
I think we're voting on the, uh, on the motion, I believe. Or on the accepting the minutes, or is that just a voice?
Just a voice.
She's doing roll call.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye of accepting the minutes? Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Acceptance of claims and accounts from the weeks of September 9 and 16.
As properly addressed, General Bank claims approved for the weeks of September 9, 2024 to September 13, 2024, in the amount of $2,789,451.01. Total general fund expenditures, $384,119.34. And the General Bank's claims approved for the weeks of September 16 through September 20, in the amount of $1,487,143.92, for a total general fund expenditures of $224,535.83.
Okay. Any questions on the claims? Corrections? Seeing none? All this, all those in favor? No?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept the claims.
Support. All right. So we have a motion and a support. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Today, we have a special program update on Midland Kids First and Recovering Youth Futures Initiative, and Judge Allen and Noreen Contardi. Judge, thank you for being here.
So, thank you so much, Chairman and Commissioners. Let me introduce Noel Contardi. I think you've met her before, but Midland Kids First, President and CEO. So she's right behind me, and in every sense of the word. So, I appear today, um, thank you for the opportunity. It's always nice to talk about the successful programs that we've had in Midland County. And this one in particular is, has more depth to it being a local program, because Midland Kids First really facilitated the program that has benefited not only the court wards, but the, we call them voluntary wards. So, Midland Kids First is, is to be given a great deal of credit. So, um, I wanted to talk about it because it is a program, and I think I reviewed a little bit of it in the annual report review, but this gives you some detail and gives you some idea of, of why we need to keep it and why it needs to be sustained. So, the definition, I had a handout. Does everybody have one? I did bring extra copies. Okay. I apologize for it being a little bit late. But, um, it is a program for all youth under the age of 18 for Midland County. That means all youth. So if there is a referral from all the multiple sources that could possibly occur in Midland County, even if they are not a court ward, they are eligible for the program. So it is a substance abuse treatment program. And I have some of the Midland Kids First people here who were very instrumental in making sure that we, that we, that we were able to do that. We have Pastor Gibb Giblin and Dr. Dick Filinski. And it was, um, was quite a process to get this up and running. So, the idea is that, um, one of our major problems over the years that I've been on the bench has been substance abuse. And I know Commissioner Terrell Williger was very much a part of making sure that we had programs available, but alcohol was definitely the biggest issue, and now we have alcohol and marijuana. So, um, that has been true throughout. So, in addressing that issue in about 2017, 2016, 2017, um, this protocol was developed. And just to remind everybody, the original idea was to have what I will call bricks and mortar. So to have a special residential facility, if you will, so that that could be treated. Because at the time, that was the only treatment that was available, was to send kids out if they were a high-risk substance abuser. So, this protocol, and on the handout, the part that I liked the best, because I made sure it was in here, is talking about the process, and it's at the very bottom of the first page. So, the way that it works is if somebody in the community, church, school, we get a lot of referrals from the schools, parents, other kids, if they make a referral, then there is an evaluation that is done, and it is done through the cooperation of Community Mental Health. And we have a fabulous worker, Jackie Warner, who is the youth intervention specialist. And so she intervenes, and she does an analysis of whether there is a low, medium, or a high-risk youth who is needing to have treatment in the community. So then, at that point, there is a referral based on low, medium, or high risk of reusing, if you will, to three agencies. One is, uh, Community Mental Health, which does the evaluation, and then three private agencies, which I think is a very unique part of this program. And when I give this presentation across the state, they're always surprised that we have, we have that integration of both the public, the Community Mental Health, and the private agencies. And that's the way it should be. There should be a collaboration between our public entities and our private agencies. So the three private agencies are Aspiring to Change Counseling, J&amp;A Counseling, and Partners in Change. And, um, the way that it works, it was Bruce Groome, who was originally the one who was working on this, and he is an attorney, and was very diligent and very, um, particular in making sure that we had non-identifiable, um, usage for the youth who are getting the treatment. Because otherwise, why would the youth come in? Why would the family agree to it if the name is going to be splashed all over everything? So, it is very, probably, I think, tighter than the HIPAA requirements, quite frankly. But, um, the success over the years has been really quite stunning. So what we did, um, is developed in the court, and so we've used that with the voluntary wards as well, um, a two-year recidivism definition. So if we don't see that youth again for two years, um, in the court system and with the voluntary wards, in other words, the non-court wards, um, then that is considered to be a successful, um, part of the program. We're not seeing a reoffending, which is what recidivism means. So, um, we have had 194 closed cases. The, the, um, metrics on this are very closely followed. We just had a meeting last week. It lasted an hour, hour and a half, and the metrics are done by Kelly Jensen, who is working with Midland Kids First to be able to get the dynamics of, of what these kids are using, um, what we are seeing as the most important parts of the referrals. And in looking at that definition, there's not a national definition of recidivism, unfortunately, so we came up with one, and you'll see it there. With the kids, youth who, um, who have gone through the treatment, we have only a 14% recidivism rate, which is extraordinarily low. And then just recently, we, um, it was Michelle Bell who said, "Well, what about the kids who drop out?" Because, because that does happen. So, um, on the kids who have dropped out, and this is on the second page, right, right above the drug and alcohol offenses by year, um, the kids who have dropped out, in other words, not completed the program, we have a 44% recidivism rate. So, what that means is that the treatment, number one, is very effective, and then these kids are not coming back either into the system, or, um, reoffending, or using substances as to the voluntary wards. So it's three times as high of a reoffense rate for the youth who are not a part of the, of the Recovering Youth Futures program. Um, I, that's, that's like, um, an amazing statistic. If you take anything away from today, if you could take that away, that would be great. Just to give you an idea, and put, put down some of the statistics that I get asked about when I give those presentations, the client age, it peaks at 17, and then the court wards make up about 63% of the participants, and this is on the front page, sorry, I'm skipping around a little bit. The court wards make up 63%, and the voluntary wards make up 37%. So, um, there is the referral to the treatment providers that have been identified. You approve all of the contracts for the court wards on these providers, just, you know, FYI. So we are very pleased with the providers and everything that they've been able to do. The treatment for a high-risk youth is very, very different than the treatment for a low-risk youth. And what we don't want to do is to put a low-risk youth into a treatment modality that is high, for high-risk kids, because they learn the habits, if you will, of the high risks. So we try to keep those kids in a program that makes sense for the risk level that they're at. The outcomes, as I, as I've said, are amazing. Now, with Midland Kids First, we had, well, you've seen it in other things. It's called developmental assets. This is on the second page at the top, under, under outcomes. So it's a developmental asset profile. The probation officers on the court wards give this test to the youth right at the beginning, before treatment has even started, and then what they do is they take it midpoint and then at the end. So what you will see are these different, um, areas where we find, um, there are assets that need to be developed for young people, and the assets are clearly increasing under the, um, under, under the program. So you'll see that in the chart, where we're talking about support, empowerment, boundaries. It went, the developmental asset profile went from 19.4 to 22.0, just to give you an example. Social competencies, which we all know, um, this age group is very peer-centered, so social competencies is one of the ones that I look at. And you know, from the annual report, um, as to the court wards, that our alcohol and drug offenses are down 98% since 2002. I don't have to tell you the correlation, I hope, between this type of a statistic and the fact that we have residential placement for our youth in the court that is pretty stunningly low. In 2023, it was 17,000, as far as the cost to the county, and then the year before, in 2022, it was zero. So, we have been able to do the treatment here, in Midland, which is a win-win. We're doing it with private agencies, again, a win-win, and our, our youth are, um, just amazingly improved as a result of the program. So, um, I would like to hand it off, at this point, to Noel Contardi. She has a few comments to make, and then, I think, very importantly, she has a story to tell.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. Recovering Youth Futures, when you hear all that information and you look at it, you realize creates a safety net for the youth in our county. And that's amazing, because we often say Midland is a great place to raise a family, and we say it because we have excellence, excellence in education, we have lots of opportunities for kids to be engaged, we have a safe community. But you know what? We have this safety net here, in Recovering Youth Futures, that allows them to have that stumble and fall on a soft landing, and bring them back up to a base level to move forward. That's what Midland Kids First is about. It's about empowering kids to see their potential, to realize how they can forge a path to a better future. On a personal note, I also get to stand here as a parent of a youth who went through the program. And I can't tell you how powerful it is. That's what the data does not. We are very data-driven, but the personal experience cannot be captured in those charts and graphs. I had a 16-year-old, student athletes, National Honor Society, did anything you asked of him. You would not have suspected he had an issue with substances, not at all. And when we found out and engaged with Recovering Youth Futures, he spent four months in counseling, and the difference was remarkable. But we didn't see it right away. You know, you wonder how much could be accomplished in four months? And four months, you know, he said, "Okay." The counselors believed he was, he was good to go, and, and he was fine to maneuver on his own. But as he approached his senior year of high school, he was challenged with setbacks and disappointments like no other. And that's where the test came. Could he manage? Could he cope with playing football and breaking his hip in game two? And the prospect of not playing in that Midland Dow game, that's a big thing for senior athletes, right? But he fought back, had surgery, recovered, came back, fought back hard, got back. Track was his big sport. He had prospects to take that to the next level in college. He was, um, state-ranked ninth in sprinting. But when it came to districts, his hip gave way and took all of that off the table for him. His future was changed. And you know what? To add to that, two weeks later, his girlfriend of a year or so broke up with him the week before prom. If this kid could stand up one more time, that's all he needed. He was just getting hit and hit and hit. And you know what? We found out he could. He could make it through, and he proved to himself that difficult conversations, confrontations, disappointments, he had the ability to maneuver through. And that's when I knew he was going to be okay. I knew the four months was enough. And that, as he managed off to school, and had to forge his own path forward and do it alone without the support of family right by his side, he was going to be okay. And he did. He graduated from Michigan State with honors, and he continues to reach and strive for those aspirations for his career. That's what those numbers don't tell you. That's the impact it has on a family. That's the impact it has on a person, long-term. Okay? That is the value. So when I look at Judge and I say, "Thank you for this," she knows it comes from the heart, but also because I love being the administrator of this program, because I know both sides of that line. I know the difference that we make administratively and going through the processes, and knowing the fidelity of the program is intact, but I also know from the end user how powerful it really is. And I think everybody needs to know that. We have lived in other communities, and I assure you that if this scenario had played out in any one of those other communities, the outcome would not have been the same, not by any measure. So I thank you. I thank the community for supporting it. I thank Midland for even having this and viewing youth to be that important, that their futures are that valuable and valuable, that we can shape them and help them get there. Thank you for your time this morning, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Certainly appears to be an amazing program, amazingly successful, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's see, at this time, we invite public comment. If you, please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and we have three minutes for public comment, per person. Three minutes per person, not three minutes total.
Good morning. Renita Bonades from Homer Township. With an election coming up very soon, um, one of the things I look at is the qualified voter file, and the census for Midland County is 83,457 people in 2021. I noticed in the recent qualified voter file that I received that there are 71,851 registered voters. This is a 2,000-plus addition since two years ago, and over 6,000 since 2019. I've not seen that big of an increase in our population, and the other side of this is that of those, of those voters in the county, there are actually only 69% that are of voting age of all the residents, which therefore means there should be 65,848 voting age residents in the county. But somehow, we have over 71,000, almost 72,000 registered voters, which is in excess of 8% if every person that was of voting age was registered to vote. National average is 70% of voting age people are actually registered to vote across the count, the country. So I guess my question is, how are we still registering more people when we're past 100%? And how secure is our vote if we have that many excess voters on our voter rolls? And what are we doing to clean them up so that we can be sure our votes count? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Bill Davina, Homer Township. After our last meeting, we had several articles in the paper, and really, the question that I heard a lot of was, is it appropriate for the invocation that was given at the meetings, and has been our tradition? So I thought it'd be interesting to do a little examination of, uh, what does it really mean when we talk about the separation of church and state in the First Amendment? But I found it really interesting, and I'm going to read from you from the first prayer at the Continental Congress by their chaplain in 1774. "O Lord, our heavenly Father, high and mighty, King of kings and Lord of lords, who dost from thy throne, behold, all dwellers on earth, and reignest with power supreme and uncontrolled over all the kingdoms and empires and governments." The prayer concludes with, "All this we ask in the name and through the merits of Jesus Christ, thy Son and our Savior." No one in the room yelled out, "You can't say that. Our country must keep church out of the state's business." Surely, they would have known the beliefs that many would soon die for, and what would end up being the bedrock of our founding documents, wouldn't they? Since then, into the present day, our Congress opens the day with prayer by a paid chaplain who is an officer of the House or Senate. Jesus is not prohibited from these prayers. So in summary, the opening prayer given in this body is built into the fabric of this republic, and God help us if Jesus is excluded from our government. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none? We'll move on. Consent items, there are none. Standing committee reports and resolutions? Amanda, would you take us through report number one?
Committee report number one, properly addressed. We Administration and Operations Committee recommend the approval of an extension to the current Administrator-Controller Agreement with Bridget Cranston. The term of the current agreement shall expire on October 31, 2024, or earlier if a new contract has been negotiated and approved by both parties. Respectfully submitted, Your Administration and Operations Committee, James Geisler, the vice chair, and Eric Dorian, and Steve Glazer, for Janet Snyder.
Commissioner Geisler?
I'm sorry, you-
And operations?
Pardon?
It's, I'm sorry. Commissioner Snyder?
I was absent that day, but I believe the A&amp;O Committee discussed, um, discussed this, and-
That's right. Should I have Commissioner Geisler? Commissioner Geisler, you were chairing the A&amp;O for that meeting. Could I ask you to, uh-
Yes.
Bring this forward?
The Administration and Operations Committee recommends approval of the request to extend the Administrator-Controller's contract.
Okay. So we have the recommendation. Any questions? Discussion? Amanda, could you call roll, please?
Certainly. Commissioners Terrell Williger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Snyder?
Yes.
Chairman Glazer?
Yes.
And, would I ask? Commissioner Dorian? In regards to the committee report number one? From the A&amp;O Committee recommending the approval of the extension of Bridget's contract?
Extended the Administrator-Controller's contract. Waiting for Eric.
Would you like to vote yes, sir? Or no?
All set. Ready to go.
Perfect. Would it be a yea or a nay then on that?
Pardon?
A yea or a nay?
For committee report number one?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Committee report number two.
Committee report number two is properly addressed. We, Your Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Service. The term of the agreement is September 30, 2024 through September 30, 2026. This is a federal reimbursement grant and is based on actual expenditures not to exceed a total budget of $750,000. We recommend the approval of the agreement and that the Administrator-Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, your vice chair, Eric Dorian, Steve Glazer, for Janet Snyder, Your Administration's and Operations Committee, also Steve Glazer, the chairperson, Eric Dorian, and James Geisler, Your Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler?
I'm sorry, I can't. I'm looking for the-
So, committee report number two.
The Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee recommend approval of an agreement for the Tidvolasi River flood risk management and ecosystem restoration study. Motion by Commissioner Snyder that the Administration and Operations Committee, Finance Committee, and recommends adoption of Agenda Item 86-9-24. Commissioner, discussion, none.
Okay. Thank you.
this realm when Recovering Youth Futures was initiated, and so I'm really pretty familiar with it, and I'm very familiar with it. And I commend them for their data, and their current outcomes are absolutely outstanding. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Geisler, any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Dorian?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Twilliger's comments with regard to Judge Allen's presentation and absolutely necessary program.
Very good.
That is all.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I would like to echo Commissioner Twilliger's and Commissioner Dorian's comments as well. I really appreciated the presentation today, and I think it is so important, what they are doing in Midland. I'm sure it is not always easy, but it's very vital, like they said, creating a safety net. Midland is blessed with a tremendous amount of safety net programs, and I am so glad about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes, thank you. I would like to echo those comments as well, and what an encouraging presentation to all of us. And the personal example, I just appreciate that so much. We can hear all the data, but it's so good to hear it put into practice. And I just, I look around at this team, feeling a little emotional this morning. We're down to our last few board meetings with this team, and I have some great friends that are retiring, and this board could look very different after the election. Well, it is going to look very different, right? There's some that are not running, and I just want to thank my friends. There's so much wisdom and kindness and public service and just doing it almost until you can't anymore. And I just want everyone to know how appreciative I am of that, and our team, and Steve, and Gay, and Jim, you know, you've just served Midland, our community, so well, and you've helped me. I've learned a lot from all of you, and I'm very thankful. And I know we have a couple months to go, but I just, I was really feeling that this morning, and I just wanted to make mention of your public service and how grateful I am for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, yes, I too believe that we're genuinely blessed to have the program, to have the leadership at that time to undertake initiating such a program, you know, quite an innovation, so we are blessed. All right. Let's move on to meeting schedules, and we'll start with Commissioner Geisler.
The meeting schedule is Executive Committee, Human Services Committee, Finance Committee, and A&amp;O Committee all meeting on October 8. It's very unusual. I don't ever remember having that many meetings in one day.
Okay. Commissioner Dorian?
None to announce.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I only have one to announce. On Monday, October 14, there is, I have City Council at 7:00 p.m. That is all. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes, thank you. Just going through my schedule. So on Tuesday, the 8th, we do have A&amp;O at 2:30 here, and that evening, I have Geneva Township at 7:00 p.m. The 9th, we have Jerome Township at 7:00 p.m. The 10th, at 9:00 a.m., at the Road Commission is the Road Commission. Monday, the 14th, is the Village of Sanford at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay. And for me, I have Finance Committee on Tuesday, the 8th, Greendale Township at 7:00. Wednesday, October 9th, I have Porter Township at 6:00, and Jasper Township at 7:00, and Lee Township on Monday, October 14th at 7:00. And that's it for me.
Mr. Chairman, permission to revise my previous schedule?
Sure.
I will be attending the Junior Achievement Dinner at the H on Wednesday, and I think it's 5:30, where my brother Greg is going into the JA Hall of Fame. Well deserved.
All right.
You're here.
Good job, Greg.
And congratulations.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I think we've gone through everything. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I was going to give my report for my meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I gave mine, and that should, I'm sorry. Commissioner Twilliger?
Yes. This Thursday, on the 3rd, I have Recovery Court over at the courthouse at 9:00 a.m. October 8, Reporting Human Service meeting, and that will be at 11:00 a.m. And also, on the 10th, there will be a Pinecrest and Department of Health and Human Service meeting that will be at 10:00 a.m. And also, reporting on October 14, Ingersoll Township and Mount Haley Township meetings. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. And then Commissioner Snyder?
I did mine.
You gave yours.
Yeah.
And we're set. Nobody else? Okay. All right. I think we've made it through that.
Now we can adjourn.
Now we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Support. Okay. 8, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. to meet in an executive session of the Board of Commissioners and other committees to resume their duty. Have a good day.
All right. That's the best part about nobody knowing.